Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the March 17th, 2025 Long Hill Township Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Adequate notice of the meeting of the Long Hill Township Board of Education was given as required by the Open Publics Meeting Act as follows. Notice was sent to the Echo Sentinel and Daily Record on October 14th, 2024. Notices were posted on the bulletin board in the first-floor entrance hall of the School District Administration Building, Gillette, New Jersey. Notices were filed with the township clerk, and notices were mailed to all persons who have requested individual notice pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mrs. Daley?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Grosspuff?
Here.
Dr. Marr?
Here.
Mrs. McLeven?
Here.
Mrs. Case? Here. Going to start off with a presentation, and appropriate for STEAM. It is New Jersey STEM Month, for people who don't know, so very exciting. So, Mr. Alexis.
So, Principal Vitarello is here, and Mrs. Nadbielny, our STEAM teacher at the middle school, and she's brought a few of her students to give us a presentation. Should we gather around for the demonstration, or do you want? I think Michael has a slideshow first.
Yeah. Information over first. Okay.
Okay, greetings, everyone, and thank you for having Central Middle School this month. We're very excited. So, I'm going to go over a little bit of the structure of the STEAM program, just so everybody's aware of what the students at the middle school get to experience. So, we offer STEAM at 6th, 7th, and 8th grades, so all students in Central Middle School have this experience. And the way that it's organized is that it's a cycle course for one marking period, so every student gets it for 45 days each year, each year that they rotate through the middle school. Some of the key benefits of why we offer STEAM, and a little bit of an overview, is the first reason is to develop critical thinking skills. Students learn to analyze information, evaluate evidence, and form logical conclusions through inquiry-based learning. Enhances students' creativity. We want them to be excited to be there, and they're excited to present tonight as well. Every time I go in that room, which we have a brand-new STEAM room this year, it is fantastic. There's always excitement, and there's always passion in there, and I love to see the things that they're doing. So, we integrate arts into STEAM. It encourages innovative thinking, unique solutions to problem-solving. Promoting collaboration. I don't think I've ever not seen the students together when they're working. They're always in collaborative teams, so that's such an important quality for our adolescent students to learn. So, they're always working on projects together, building communication skills, teamwork, such an important word, so we always want them working together and sharing their ideas. Improving students' problem-solving abilities. Hands-on activities. They're always working, sometimes they're on their computers, but oftentimes, they're either on the floor, on the ground, collaborating, working, building, and thinking together. Expanding career awareness. Exposure to various different STEAM fields that they can potentially have as paths for careers in the future. Increasing engagement and motivation. Again, the students are always engaged, hands-on learning, hands-on thinking, and they have fun with it, and they really are learning relevant skills. Building confidence. So, students, when they successfully complete STEAM projects, it boosts their self-esteem, they have a level of accomplishment, and just overall excitement about being in school and engaging in these activities. And adapts to real-world applications. STEAM projects often mimic real-world scenarios, allowing students to apply their knowledge to practical situations, which is very exciting. Some of just the STEAM program highlights this year, some of the activities that they've engaged in. So, those are all the skills, all the focus areas of things that we're trying to build, but some of the highlights. So, physical computing skills, basic computer programming, coding little micro bit mini-computers, so they're actually coding them to respond to commands, 3D printing. We have three, right? Three? Three 3D printers that are operational, and students have been using. Learning CAD software foundation, experience in wind turbine engineering. We actually have like little sample wind turbines. They can test them out, see what types of different parts make, create the most energy. Focus on AI and machine learning, and using distance and sound sensors. Jack, I should be able to play this video, right? This is just a very informal video, just that two students, Ms. Nadbielny was able to grab.
Pretty much, we used, we coded the tri-colored LED light to flash different colors, and then we used the two LED lights to code the eyes, and then we used the position servos to make the feet spin.
Well done. Here's the snap code. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, it's just a little quick informal video of just walking around, seeing what their students are actually doing, what they're able to explain. So, they're using those coding skills to program their little creation there. Okay. So, now I'm going to turn it over to the live demonstration portion. So, we have Regina and Abielny, our STEAM teacher, and we have Mira, Avery, and Dylan today that are gonna model some of what they've been working on recently. So, I'm going to turn it over to them now. Which, is one group going first?
Seven.
Okay. Okay.
Do you want the microphone for your introduction? Your introduction?
I, I...
No? It's up to you.
Hello, my name is Ingrid Javonski.
My name is Mary Lau, and we are in 7th grade in the school of Central Middle School. Today, we're demonstrating how to code drawings using the Finch robots. The Finch robots are part of the 7th grade STEAM program, and we're coding the robots to draw a coin and a hat for St. Patrick's Day. So, on my computer, I use a code to have it draw a hat, and the hat shows how we can code the Finch to draw straight lines and sharp edges. And so, right now, the Finch is following my code that I... And it draws a hat. And then, I put in a circle, which shows how the Finch can make lines with curves and circles. We decided to show the Finch drawing because it was one of our favorite units in the STEAM cycle. We can also code the robots to change colors and make different noises. Although, this is just a small demonstration, codes like this are used in everyday life. Cuttings like this can be used in factories to help with manufacturing and assembly lines as well. Thank you for letting us show our codes.
That may look like simple, which is not. Shapes, I can tell you, there's a lot of computer science that went into that, and they did a great job. They both came up with this idea on their own when we were doing coding in class originally. I had them drawing different shapes. They were programming a square, a pentagon, a triangle, an hexagon, octagon, but they chose to go with the feet for St. Patrick's Day. We had two 8th graders, one of our 8th graders, Towns, is on a new travel basketball team. The 8th graders did Lego robotics. Yep, let me just pull this out. Great job.
Hello.
These are basically battery packs with, that you can code into them. Then, we use these iPads to code them. So, it should spin.
My cat does that, too.
So, the thing with STEAM that I really enjoy is that that spins like crazy, right? And it doesn't go in any direction, but you can build and figure things out to make that go straight, to curve, to go not as crazy as it will. So, it solves many problems, and you've got to use those problem skills to create better ways to build. And this is a grabber, so you press this button, and it grabs. So, I gotta run the code. So, as you can see, it's like a wheel as a button. So, you just press the button, and it opens up and closes. Then, you pick the Lego pieces up, and you pick them up and grab them, which is also really cool. What I liked about this one, I made this one, my partner in Towns made that one, I liked about this one is it's really complicated to build, but when you ran into problems, you had to go back in the steps, figure out what's wrong, what's going on, and you've got to learn not to get frustrated with yourself as you're building it, so then you can solve the problem, figure things out, and be able to pick up the Lego bricks, like press and button.
Great job.
Very nice. Wonderful.
And just now, show here's some 3D prints. I didn't bring our 8th graders get to use Tinkercad and design and create something that they want to make on their own, bringing home. 6th graders are currently working on a wind turbine unit, so they are trying to redesign turbine blades. They're testing with the digital multimeter. They're assessing whether their newly-created blades are more effective, more efficient than the original ones. 8th grade right now, doing Hummer bird kits, so they're having a lot of fun with that. Very creative.
Nice. Wonderful. Amazing.
Okay, thank you so much. We've just been so thrilled with the way that the new STEAM lab came out, and the development of the course. We've really tried to raise the level of STEAM programming that we're offering at the middle school, and having Regina's just been absolutely phenomenal. The students have been so excited about all the different projects that they're able to engage in at all the different grade levels, and really get their hands on all this technology. So, we're just thrilled with the progress this year, and where it's going to go in the future, too. So, we're very, very excited about it.
It's quite exceptional, really.
Yeah, any questions? Well, I have a question. So, one, for the STEAM cycles, do you do the same things every single cycle, or does it change?
Yes and no. I do the same things, but I found from the first marking period to the second marking period, there was a difference in the student and what they remembered from scratch coding. So, the first marking period, I did scratch coding at 7th grade, at a higher level than they did. I found the second group, I moved the scratch coding down to the 6th grade, so now 6th graders are getting the scratch coding. The rest of it is pretty much the same with the Finch robots, the Hummer bird kits for the 8th grade, the Finch 7. Next, I am building, so for me, this is progression next year, since my 8th won't be here, there'll be a night for my 7th robot to age. Anything that I did the same between 7th and 8th this year, I have micro bit and Lego movers that I'm adding to the curriculum for next year. But I am pretty much keeping it the same one marking period to the next 5th grade level.
I have another question. Are the, most of the kits reusable?
Yes. So, like, these Finch robots, these are all reusable and charge all the time. Same for Legos. I mean, there's consumables, the markers will dry out, there's a lot of, I bring them a lot of materials from home, hardboard, all sorts of containers. I mean, that's, as a STEM STEAM teacher, you're always using consumables like that. A lot of that I would bring home. Batteries only good batteries next year for the robots that don't, don't charge. Like, my Hummer bird kits, they do take batteries. The PLA filaments, only new filaments, you know, as we run out of that for the 3D printing, but pretty much everything else is reusable. I mean, I did set everything up when I was making purchases in order to have this sustainable for 4 years. We reuse the wind turbine kits as well. At the end of this unit, they will break them down, they will put them in the boxes, and we'll reuse those.
Do the wind turbine kits align at all with the climate change standards, or is it engineering?
I, we talk about different types of energy, but I'm not aligning it specifically to the requirements. And those, I know they were affiliated to computer science as well. I'm not aligning computer science requirements.
Okay. Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much again. I just wanted to also recognize the VEX Robotics State Championship was over the weekend, and the elementary team scored, placed 3rd in skills, 3rd in teamwork, and was also granted an excellence award. And the middle school team ranked 18th out of 66 teams, though. So, they had a pretty good showing. So, we're not sure if they're moving on yet, but that was just the update from over the weekend. So, I just wanted to share that, because it's all connected in a way. Thank you so much.
Okay. Communications.
Nothing to report.
Board committee and liaison reports. Karen.
Okay. Since our last meeting, there were actually two meetings of the Morris County Ed Services Commission, and the biggest thing is, number one, I had often mentioned about the sale of the, was a state building, and now it has definitely become the property of the Morris County Ed Services, hiring an architect to see what redesigned configuration could be made to some of the rooms. As I mentioned, their enrollment is decreasing, so the writing is on the wall in the next couple of years, they're probably looking at not having the school. One of the first things they will probably do is move their offices from Morris Plains, where they're renting space, to the building. Secondly, their budget, we approved the budget at the last meeting. You have on, on our agenda, you're approving the rates that were identified, you know, and finalized. They don't have, the Ed Services Commission does not get property taxes or state aid. Their income is based purely on members' dues, as well as what they receive for payment for the services they're providing to the public schools and the non-public schools. With respect to committees, governance, okay, excuse me, George, Kim, and I have agreed to submit a proposal for this year's school boards conference. That doesn't, you know, have to see whether it's going to be accepted or not. The conference is in the latter part of October. Interview questions, you know, we all have our interview questions. Now, we finalize those, and I think the guidelines have been set out that we will interview at the end of this meeting. We'll have the interviews one at a time, and they'll be taken in alphabetical order. After that, we're going to have executive session to discuss the candidates, and then come out of executive session, and actually, it takes some action with a resolution to have the new board member accepted. Reminder went out on the strategic plan, last strategic planning session, which is tomorrow, so hopefully, many people can turn out to Millington School for that. The CSA and self-evaluation schedule, it's going to be tight, guys, in the sense that you're only going to get a week to, to do both, in the sense, because sometimes, if you wait too long, just add it on. So, you're going to get one week to get it done. George will complete his part for the CSA evaluation on May 14, and then, basically, he has 48 hours to make corrections or changes, et cetera, and then we can access it, and we will have between May 16th and May 22nd to complete the CSA evaluation. Excuse me. And then, we'll move on to a review on June 2nd, after Kim has completed a summary, and things will progress from there, because it has to be completed by July 1st. Self-evaluation, we're looking for, it's going to, they redesigned it, so it's similar to the CSA evaluation now, where Kim will be inputting our board goals and what we've accomplished, and then it gets turned over to us to do whatever, you know, answer or respond to whatever is there. We will have from June 2nd to June 11th to do that, and at a special meeting on June 16th, we will be covering a whole myriad of things, not least, which is the self-evaluation, goal-setting, and George's review. So, we got, like, the busy late spring, early summer, and I think you all got, I, some, a notice that I put out about the April 7th review. Have something written, you know, just one page, it's going to be short. First half hour is ethics training, and then you'll have the goal review for each committee. Okay. Finance, I'm not going to go into the, the budget stuff, because Robyn will be covering that in her presentation. Excuse me. I think I mentioned before that presently, we now have 104 who qualify for free and reduced lunch. That now has put us to a point where, I think I mentioned, we're having to offer breakfast next year, and since the bid that we previously submitted was only for lunch, within the next course of the next couple of weeks, another bid will be going out to handle both breakfast and lunch, and hopefully, things have been working out with the present vendor, but we have to see what's going to turn up for that. Anything associated with a problem of ordering seems to have been handled. Are there any situations where students are not getting their lunch? So, everybody's on board in terms of how to order. Excuse me. Big thing now is that you can, students can order lunch for field, field trips, okay? Also, FORCE has graciously volunteered, or, you know, is donating for the free and reduced lunch children, one course per semester, free for them to be able to participate in the FORCE courses, and following one of our goals, Robyn was able to secure a grant for $6,000 for the carts that we need to serve our breakfasts. Come, come. Okay, the presentation is up on the website, has been up on the website, and...
Not yet, Karen.
Oh, I apologize. Okay. Right, we got, the board got it. And as of the meeting, there were no questions posed to Robyn. Okay. All right. You're going to see on the agenda several items. Obviously, the tentative budget for the Zbona Sports Camp, there was a 2% increase in the facilities use fee. Alphabet came to us and asked to have their contract extended, and they will not raise the rates, so that's okay. And I guess there had been a question as to whether they had any openings or, you know, slots available for kids, and yes, there are. There was something wrong with their system that was somehow kicking things out incorrectly. For the FORCE, in the way that the accounting does, has been happening, there's some little leftover monies in different, in different categories, so an agreement was reached that they would all be accumulated, and they, they have been providing money for instruments, again, for students who could not provide it for themselves. So, all those little bits of change that are left at the end of the year are going to be moved over to that music bucket, I'll call it. Let's see. We joined a new co-op. It opens up, in Bergen County, it opens up to us another list of acceptable vendors, and hopefully, you know, Robyn is always looking to see where we can get things the cheapest, obviously. There are professional conferences that are going to be attended in May, the New Jer, well, NJPSA and the NASBO by Robyn, and, oh, the 23, 24 pay-to-play fees are going to be collected this month, and the final three checks are due. And you're going to see, there's a disposition of books from two libraries, Millington and Gillette, and I just want you to know that there were inquiries made about, you know, could they be used in California and all. First of all, like, the shipping is, you know, horrendous, but these are outdated books, you know? And mostly, what really they're looking for out there is money. They're not looking for these kinds of supplies. So, I said, all the budget stuff will come through, Robyn. Any questions? Any money?
I do.
Okay.
Two things. What, did, did you say that you, that we were going to be looking into new vendors for the, the food program?
We have to put out an RFP.
Okay. Okay.
Because the first one that we got, that was only put out to have lunch. So, since we have to have breakfast, you got to put out a new RFP.
Okay. And then, the second was in regards to the Alphabet having issues with, people getting kicked out of the system?
Mm-hmm.
Were those people that were kicked out of the system, were they notified that it's back open, or there was an issue?
I believe they were, yes, because we told them.
We sent that to everyone, and, and told them there was a glitch, and, and there are no issues anymore. So, yes, they said that they did a job.
Good. Thank you.
Karen, on Danielle's point, you're going out to RFP for lunch and breakfast, correct?
And breakfast, correct.
Are you interested in a vendor, perhaps one does breakfast a lot cheaper, and maybe one does lunch a little different?
Whoever responds, you know? You got to take...
But you don't want to separate them. You don't want two different vendors.
So, you don't want two different, so it has to be one vendor to do it all?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and you got to see, like I said, you got to see who responds.
Supply, sure.
Does our current vendor do breakfast? Do you know?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Danielle?
Okay, so, um, okay, so, we had a community relations committee meeting on February 25th. It was myself, and George, Tom, and Kim, and we spoke about, like, the results from the first strategic planning meeting that we had, and it was a good turnout and everything like that. We did speak about how, I just, how to, again, how to support PTO and other organizations with us, with, for the LIGF and things like that, how we can help support them. They did have a really good turnout for the Wizards, and they're doing their Pop Kids event as well right now, so we're just trying to really put that out there and support them. And then, of course, we talked about the Sterling Street Fair, so there will be probably a mascot, which will be super fun, which is, I believe it's April 27th. So, just reminders, if anyone's available to sign up, because I think we just have a couple of people on there. And our next meeting, I believe, is March 24th, but I can, I'll double-check that. And then, Katie's not here, so she gave me, gave me what to say for the Buildings and Grounds meeting that took place. Looks like, okay, March 19th, it was myself, Tom, George, Kim, Katie, we were all present, and Robyn and Mark. There was a CUSAC update, the CUSAC site visit originally scheduled for 2/12/25, was rescheduled to 4/24 due to the inclement weather. Asked for a maintenance and operations update over President's Weekend. During the break, maintenance staff continued painting at Central Middle School. They complete, they completed all hallways at CMS, and then we'll move on to Millington. They plan to utilize breaks and empty building days to maximize maintenance work. As for the capital improvements projects, the, from the Millington tree damage from the storm back in November, the roof repairs were completed on February 22nd. The damaged classroom with the rooftop AC unit is included in the rod grant work scheduled for summer. In the meantime, they're exploring options for a temporary air conditioning solution, maybe a portable, through a portable window unit, I believe. Let me see here. As for the rod grant, I guess, okay, sorry, guys, I'm not really fluent in what this says, but the rod, rod gr, rod grant includes the classroom unit ventilator replacement. They reached out to the state contract vendors for quotes after bids, came in over budget twice, and early indications suggest costs will be within budget, allowing for most, if not all, work to be completed. As for the direct install program, moving forward with replacing the rooftop units at Millington, they decided not to proceed with the replacing of the central chiller and the RTUs at this time due to cost and life expectancy. Uh, in the meantime, they're exploring options for a temporary air conditioning solution, uh, maybe a port, through a portable window unit, I believe. Um, let me see here. As for the rod grant, uh, I guess, okay, sorry guys, I'm not really fluent in what this says. But the rod, rod gr-, rod grant includes the classroom uni- unit ventilator replacement. Um, they reached out to the state contract vendors for quotes after bids came in over budget twice. And early indications suggest costs will be within budget, allowing for most, if not all, work to be completed. As for the direct install program, moving forward with replacing the rooftop units at Millington, um, they decided not to proceed with the replacing of the central chiller and the RTUs at this time due to cost and life expectancy, which, um, are estimated at five plus years. They will explore future incentive programs for central chillers, RTUs. Um, the VAV system in administrative, in, in the administrative office. I don't know what that refers to.
But every person's in the whole office, uh, H, the heating and HVAC is not working because of the VAV. So what we're looking to do is the first step of anything would be looking at the baseboard heating. And they think that if possibly we fix the baseboard heating, everything else will work. But even if it doesn't, that still is the first step, so it's worth pursuing.
Okay. Thank you. Um, as for the CMS library, finalizing the design and the layout for updates. And, um, they're still looking at, for the Millington floor, the abatement, room 31, they're looking, are still discussing the abatement plan. Um, for the interior locks at Central Middle School, they're updating and reconfiguring locks for enhancing security and better key control, expected to improve security, reduce maintenance costs and provide better access and control. For Millington fencing, proposal to install a fence along the back of the playground between the shed and the pony fence to prevent children from entering hazardous areas. The fence will be limited to the back corner and will not extend into the surrounding park area. Um, the Gillette security enhancement, proposal to add security cameras for improved visibility and additional key card reader installation at the back door near the playground for better access control. Um, there were also new spotlights installed over at the Central Middle School stage and theater area and new curtains installed. That's about it.
Danielle, VAV stands for variable air volume.
Oh, okay.
When Mark used that, I, I asked that question. And apparently that regulates the temperature and the airflow in different parts of the office.
Good, very good.
But the way he said it, I just responded, of course.
Yeah. Um, so the next meeting will be, uh, March 19th at 4:30.
Any questions for Danielle?
No, but Danielle, I would like to confirm that our next community relations meeting is the 24th.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, Crystal?
Sure, the, um, the technology committee met on March 6th. It was myself, Kim, Tom, Katie, George and Jack. And we discussed technology interns, the technology internship program will continue this summer. They are looking to hire two interns and job postings will be available in April or May. Windows 11 follow-up, the deadline for upgrading to Windows 11 is October 2025. All necessary devices and hardware prepared for the upgrade. Um, updates will be implemented during the summer and staff will have an early adoption, option available in the coming weeks if they so choose. District-wide wireless access point replacement project is scheduled to begin in late June. Arctic has been selected, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses with me today. Arctic has been selected as the vendor due to competitive pricing and previous successful collaborations. The replacement includes all access points across the three buildings. Uh, the brand is going to remain the same with only physical unit replacements, which is great. And current access points are nearing their end of lifecycle, so this is very timely. Continued implementation of the district one-to-one initiative. The initiative will be fully implemented by 2026, but with significant progress expected by September. We're currently in year two, um, of the three years of the project. Sixty new iPads, three carts will be deployed at Gillette, leaving only forty devices needed to achieve one-to-one status. And Chromebook refresh, refreshes will occur in grades three to four and other devices will be distributed, um, as needed. There is a financial software migration to cloud-based solution. The business office is transitioning to a secure cloud-based financial management system, which is fantastic. The migration enhances security for sensitive data and improves accessibility. And then we discussed the BenQ and smart display installations. And there are over ten installations that are planned for the summer. Smart displays will be installed at Gillette and Millington. BenQ boards will be installed at Central Middle School, which are also smart displays, right, Jack? Okay, good. And a long-term plan is in place to replace all the projectors district-wide with, uh, displays by the 26, 27 school year. And the BenQ smart displays have been successfully introduced at Central, receiving very positive feedback, uh, for their enhanced capabilities and are slightly more cost-effective, um, providing a 75-inch display compared to the 65-inch display, so that's great for the older kids. And then finally, we discuss cybersecurity initiatives and the district has launched the Know Before Cybersecurity Awareness Program. The district's, um, which is an anti-phishing program. And so the district's fish prone percentage is lower than the industry average when compared to similar-sized school districts. And so it's really cool, it provides modules for teachers to go through so that they understand simulated phishing campaigns. And the staff are equipped with phishing report buttons to identify potential phishing attempts. Um, and we, I think we've all seen Phishing in Action, so really good to know that that's done for the district. And next meeting is to be determined. Any questions?
Okay, Anne?
Um, so the Student Achievement and Curriculum Committee met on March 5th under the goal of raising academic performance by deepening student understanding through inquiry-based strategies, personalized learning, uh, and critical and creative problem solving. Um, we had the I-year mid, uh, the I-ready mid-year diagnostic data, um, which was a second checkpoint on the progress of the students in the math and ELA that we were able to discuss in depth, looking at areas where students were improving and also areas that still require need or maybe more progress, uh, you know, focus. Uh, so with the professional development that the district has been holding, that has been a goal. And they had, uh, a February 13th professional development training, which focused on, uh, the shortcut is MTSS, but multi-, multiple tiered systems of.
Multi-tiered.
Multi-tiered systems of support, the last S always gets me there. Uh, and, and, um, basically targeted instruction. Um, they're looking at using small group instruction to target specific academic skills. And those skills they're targeting is coming from the diagnostic data reports. We also had an update on the, uh, change to the math curriculum, uh, which will be going into effect for next year. Uh, and an update on the preschool enrollment. Uh, so it worked out that with the students who had enrolled and then had been selected in the lottery, that once, uh, we had disseminated the information that you had a spot available, uh, some people had all, you know, decided, okay, thanks for the spot, but we're actually going to go with this other one. So, uh, we had one, uh, person left on the waitlist who, uh, we haven't been able to accommodate yet. So that was, that was fantastic because it worked out that I think everyone, uh, there, there may be more spots than we realized, once people had a spot, they didn't need the spot, we were able to offer the spot to a new person. And I guess if anyone moves to town and is interested in the waitlist, that is actually how we got onto the waitlist years ago. So there's a waitlist for anyone interested in the preschool. Uh, under the goal of improving student attendance, uh, our attendance is at a similar percentage in February as it was last year. Um, we also have a survey going out to families and then to students and staff. Uh, so the parent survey went out last week. Uh, and, uh, the student and staff one, if it hasn't gone out, it, it was going out the week after our meeting. So George, has it gone out yet?
Uh, I believe it's, it's taking place this week.
Yeah, it's coming out this week and that'll give us some information on our, on our programs. And, uh, you know, we'll see when that data comes in, uh, how that can be useful for the planning. Uh, we had a goal, under the goal of raising family engagement, a parent information webinar on I-ready. Uh, and as far as our CUSAC update, um, everything is in place as we need to for the planning in terms of student achievement. Uh, for the good of the order, there was a follow-up on some questions with the middle school. Uh, so a discussion of, you know, um, when students are feeling, uh, perhaps a little bit out of place during the day, who can they go to and how do they know who to speak to within the school building? Uh, and there are various, uh, resources for them in the school. And also a conversation about how the, uh, middle school teachers are communicating or using the open grade book. And, uh, that's something that we're, we're looking at. Our next meeting is March 26th. Uh, we also have an update, um, which I think is very exciting, from the Shared Services and Regionalization Feasibility Committee, which you'll remember is, um, Watchung Hills Regional High School and the various sending districts are participating. So there will be a public town hall community meeting on April 10th. That's at 6:30 at Watchung Hills Regional High School. And we will be sending the update, uh, through the various, uh, communications we have, probably like the Friday flyers and, and E-blast. Um, and so that is open to all the communities that are involved in the sending districts and the high school. Uh, and it should be giving you, you know, some really good information. Uh, we also are going to have a committee meeting for the Shared Service of Regionalization and Feasibility Committee on March 24th. So I will attend to represent the district and I will update you at the next meeting.
Okay, any questions for Anne?
Is that meeting on the 10th only in person or also virtual?
Give me one minute, I think it's only in person, but I actually have a flyer here that I can look at. Here we go. Now I just have to zoom in. No, I don't see a Zoom, it's, it's in, uh, in person, uh, so yeah, no, it's in person.
Thank you.
What was the timing on that?
Yeah, 6:30 in the Watchung Hills, uh, High School, um, Learning Commons, which is their media center. I'm sure there'll be people directing, it's a little bit of a walk, but it's very nice.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Uh, nothing at this time, thank you.
Yep, so Policy Committee met on February 11th at Gillette. Karen, myself and Mr. Alexis were there, uh, start at 4:30. We went through several policies in 709,000 series. Many with, with no changes or very small changes and they're on the, uh, agenda today, 51 to 54 for approval. Um, and then we've been going through the wellness policy, uh, the NJSPA policy wellness check. And so we've been looking at certain policies that, um, the NJSPA said we needed some clerical changes to. And so we're about halfway through that, so, um, that was in the committee minutes as well. We also met on March 11th, um, those policies will be on the April 7th. General meeting and our next meeting is April 2nd. That's it for policy, so I'll take questions on that and then I'll go to legislate, legislator.
We policy questions, okay?
Nope, okay. Um, and then from a legislative standpoint, um, there's, the committee met, the New Jersey Assembly Education Committee met. Um, they approved some changes to the cell phone policy legislation, um, meant to be very minor changes. They also approved A3424, which enhances the role of school counselors, specifically adding language around mental health. Um, and there's a bill right now that's working its way through the legislature about cursive handwriting instruction and potentially adding that back into the curriculum. Those are, those are still working their way, they are not law, they're working their way through, uh, committees.
Most preposterous thing ever.
All right.
That's all I got.
Um, okay. Um, I'll just add, I've been trying to sit in on everybody's meetings, so just, everyone's doing a good job and thank you guys for all of your work. Um, I'll hit on quickly township liaison, I do know that we reached out to the town to ask them about presenting our budget and we still have, we, we never heard back, right, Mr. Alexis?
We haven't heard back yet, but I don't know that Watchung Hills is scheduled to airs either, but so we're hopeful that we can probably go with the same evening.
Okay.
That's a possibility.
But we will have our budget presentation here tonight, so, but we'll move to superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you very much, we have a full agenda this evening and interviews coming up, so I'll limit my, my comments to an update on strategic planning and introductory remarks on the budget. Um, but first I want to note one item on the agenda and that's my recommendation to appoint, uh, Dana Carcello as our new Director of Special Services beginning on July 1st. We're excited about the opportunity to have Dana continue her career in Long Hill and contribute directly to the leadership of the district. As Karen mentioned, we have strategic planning, our third and final session tomorrow evening in the Millington APR at 7 o'clock. This is in-person, um, we're going to build off the feedback that we received in the first two sessions. Um, and our task for tomorrow night is to collaborate to create goal statements in four different areas. So we have four areas, first one's teaching and learning, inspiring innovation. The second group will be culture of respect and well-being. The third is future-focused facilities and the fourth group is building community. And participants will have the chance to select a topic area and collaborate on the writing of the goal statement. We encourage broad participation, of course, and again, walk-ins are always welcome. Uh, for the budget, I'd like to point out that the proposed budget is aligned with our district and board goals and with our current strategic planning. Before I turn it over to Robyn for details, I want to emphasize that the budget is focused on student learning and professional development for our faculty as well as on our future-focused facilities. So we continue to invest in our STEAM program, as you saw this evening, uh, in instructional resources that include I-ready and MTSS training and that's all part of our commitment to data-driven decision-making, as well as a new math program. Uh, we've added a third preschool inclusion class, which was mentioned, and staff resources to bolster our basic skills program, which will fit very nicely with our commitment to MTSS. And also our larger commitment to personalizing instruction. We also found a way to continue the Summer Institute, which originally started with some of the, um, the federal aid money back during COVID. So we're investing in the facilities too and have funds reserved to overhaul the Central Middle School library into a flexible, innovative Learning Commons. Something that's designed to inspire creativity, inquiry and collaborative problem solving. Um, we also have major HVAC work going on, uh, this summer. I want to thank Mrs. Bomer and the business office staff, our administrative leadership team, the Finance Committee and the entire board for creating a budget that is student-centered, strategically aligned and fiscally responsible. Now that's it for me, Robyn, you have a presentation prepared and your, your movie is going up on the website tomorrow, right? Okay.
Jack, this whole meeting hinges on you. It all falls apart.
For Jack.
Okay, so tonight I will be presenting a shortened version of the full budget presentation that was recorded as a movie. That full version has been made available to the board and will also be accessible to the pu-, uh, public on the district website. This live presentation will highlight the key points and I encourage anyone looking for more details to view the full movie. Okay, I want to recognize our Board of Education and the members of our Finance Committee, Ms. Nyquist, Mrs. Butler, Mrs. Case and Mr. Foster for their time and effort in the budget process. Developing our district's budget that is more than just numbers on a page. It's a dynamic plan designed to meet our students' needs while maintaining financial sustainability. The goal is to create a budget that supports both current priorities and long-term stability. Developing our district's budget is a collaborative, multi-month purpose, multi-month process. It begins in November with data collection and trend analysis. Throughout the winter, we work closely with teachers, administrative and the Finance Committee to prioritize needs and estimate costs. By March, we finalize a tentative budget for board review and adoption. The process concludes in May with the final budget hearing and vote. This approach assures, ensures we are thoughtful and strategic in our financial planning. This slide outlines our proposed operating expenses for 25, 26 school year. Our largest expense is the regular general ed programs for instruction at $5,679,000, focusing on our core academics. We also allocate significant resources to special education and basic skills to support diverse learning needs. Out-of-district tuition is offset by IDEA funds, helping us to manage the impact on our local budget. On the right side of the screen, maintenance and security and transportation ensure safe, well-maintained facilities and hopefully reliable student transportation. Further down, you'll see employee benefits that remain a substantial portion of the budget. The total general operating fund expenses amounted $22,41,974, including grants and debt service, it totals $23,153,525. Whoops, wrong way. This pie chart provides a clearer look at how our budget is allocated. Salaries make up the greatest portion, seen in the dark blue at 49.8%. Salaries make up the greatest portion, seen in the dark blue at 49.8%. Employee benefits are the light blue at 17.36%, and maintenance operations and transportation and busing that are another huge portion of the budget. Most importantly, 94% of our budget is fixed costs, with just 6% remaining as discretionary spending for areas like instructional materials and technology. We carefully allocate these discretionary funds to maximize their impact on student learning. Now let's take a look at how we fund the budget. The largest portion comes from the local tax levy, demonstrating strong community support. State aid contributes 6.2%, which is an essential but a limited source of funding. We then also use capital, maintenance, and emergency reserve withdrawals for specific needs. You'll see that our general fund revenue of the $22,41,000 in operating expenses matches operating expenses, and the total revenue of $23,153,525, it matches also the total expenses on the other side. This chart visually represents our funding sources, showing once again, the largest portion is our local tax levy and state aid. This highlights our district's reliance on local funding and the importance of careful financial planning. For '25-'26, we've been told to anticipate a 3% decrease in state aid, driven by reductions in transportation and special education aid, even as security aid has increased. This decrease emphasizes the need for careful budgeting to manage these funding shifts. Federal grants support key programs in our district. IDEA funds special education. The Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA, has $44,000 and has a lot to do with low-income students. And our National School Lunch Program currently is reimbursing us about $100,000 a year. Since federal funding is subject to policy changes, we remain vigilant in monitoring potential shifts. Our budget prioritized initiatives directly impact student success. The key ones I want to point out are the new math program for K-8, the additional preschool inclusion class to expand early childhood education, and the increase in basic skills staffing for targeted student support. These investments reflect our continued focus on student achievement. Our capital reserve will fund $239,000 in projects to maintain and upgrade our facilities. This includes replacing rooftop units at Millington School. We're going to replace 13 rooftop units this summer through a direct install program for improved efficiency. That's a million-dollar program, of which we have to pay back about $500,000 over five years. We're also repaying prior capital improvement projects, including last year's Gillette RTU replacement and the district-wide lighting improvement the year before that. By using our capital reserve, we address infrastructure needs without increasing tax burden. Our maintenance reserve will fund $332,000 for important facility updates, including the upgrading the central middle school media center into a modern learning commons and updating classrooms at all three schools with new paintings, screens, window shade replacements, et cetera. Like capital expenditures, these projects are fully funded from reserves, keeping tax impacts minimal. Our emergency reserve will fund additional security improvements for '25-'26, ensuring a safe and secure learning environment without increasing local taxes. After planned expenditures, our reserve balances are still going to remain strong. The capital reserve will have an ending balance of $867,000. The maintenance reserve will still have $528,000. And the emergency reserve will still have $226,000. Maintaining healthy reserves allows us to plan for future needs responsibly. The maximum allowable tax increase this year is 2%, which amounts for Long Hill to $369,752. We're going to use $162,326 in healthcare adjustment to offset expenses. And we're also going to use $114,000 in bank cap before it expires, leaving a balance of $347,300 for future needs. Right? Bank cap, remember, is due to expire in '27-'28. So we have two years to use the remaining $347,000. In computing our tax levy, the general fund tax levy increases by $647,000. You can see that on the top line on the very right. The debt service levy increases $16,402. The total tax levy is increasing $663,000. The impact for Long Hill homeowners, the increase for the year is $198.61 for an average home assessed at $622,466. That's an increase of $16.55 a month. This increase reflects our balanced approach to funding education while still being mindful of taxpayers. This chart shows how our tax levy has evolved. For '25-'26, the proposed 3.5% increase remains aligned with responsible financial planning and probably is more in line with the future than the 2% that we had been at in the past. If we look at per pupil spending from the New Jersey Taxpayers Guide for '23-'24, I also added in sending districts to Watchling Hills Regional. We are in the lower to mid-range at $20,392 per student. So Long Hill's per pupil spending of $20,392 when compared with the other districts. And this again demonstrates our commitment to high-quality education while maximizing taxpayer value. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to share our budget with you. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have a couple. And they're simple ones. On the three pages you had that showed money being taken from the-
Reserves.
Capital reserves, yes. It comes up to almost $600,000, and you say that'll have no impact on the tax levy. Where does it have an impact?
Because it's coming out of the reserves. So that's money that we have put aside already. Where's the, do you see the balances up here? So we already have money in reserves. We pulled some out, left a cap reserve for the rod grant. That leaves us money in there. So our purpose was always to have money left over in the budget to be able to put some back. And we are going to be able to put some back at the end of this budget cycle as well. But we want to use some of this money to pull out, so we don't have to raise money on the taxpayers now and keep our reserves high. We want to keep a constant circle going of having some left over, put it back, spend it, put it back, spend it. And that's the best budgeting that keeps our buildings nice.
That's a good thing. I sort of remember a million-dollar number at the end of the year.
Right, yes. And normally it is the million, right? And I did not go to the million on that this year because we're already doing a million out of direct install, right? So part of this is the direct install amount that's every year now, for five years, we're going to be paying off. We're also doing $930,000 in the rod grants. That's already $2 million in projects. And when we add in another $300,000 for the middle school media center, right? That's a big amount of projects. So we don't really need to replace a million right now. And we have a lot of technology coming out as well. So the goal is to, that the rod grant is going to reimburse us for part of the money we spent, but it's a reimbursement. We have to put it out to get it back. So once we start putting that back, we're going to build our reserve back up.
I think that's it. I've got some simple ones.
Okay, great. Anybody else?
Any other questions?
No? Great, thank you.
To you and your team.
Yes, you know what? It's group effort, group effort. Great team. Am I good, Jack? Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Okay, moving to the next item on the agenda. Any comments from the public on agenda items? Okay, so we're going to- Oh, okay, you have to come to the mic. At this point, the Board of Education welcomes comments from any member of the public on agenda items only. Please note that as per Board Policy Number 1120, a total of 15 minutes is allocated for public comments at any single board meeting. In order to provide residents the opportunity to comment, individual speakers are limited to three minutes each at any particular board meeting. The board may extend these time limits at its discretion. Any question should be directed to the board president. And depending upon the nature and complexity of the question, it may or may not be answered during the meeting by the administration. If so, the response would be, would occur after this public portion of the meeting has concluded. Everyone has the freedom to speak, but please be advised that anything said in public may have legal ramifications, and there is no protection regarding statements made by the public. Please state your name and address before you begin.
Hi, my name is Sumit Vaidhani. I'm resident in Long Hill. Just a quick question. I saw there was 841K of debt service. Just wanted to understand, like, how much is the debt that we have? And like, how many years it will be paid off and what interest rate we are paying?
So that's, I'll leave it to, is that a question that can be answered or?
Yeah, I don't have the number right off. I can tell you, yeah, I believe it expires in '28-'29. So we have two more years.
Two more years to pay it off. Okay.
And I can get back to you with how much and dollars. I just don't know the numbers right off.
Sounds good. I was just curious, because, you know, interest rates have gone up from 2% to 7%. And given we have a healthy reserve, the question is like, if we should be paying 7% or like, pay off some of it? So that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so move to resolutions. Karen, will you move in number one minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Abstain.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Danielle, will you move in financials, numbers two through 34?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Yes. Crystal, will you move in special services, number 35?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Ann, will you move in personnel, number 36 to 48?
So moved. Second.
Any questions?
I'm sorry, I missed that. You said a second?
Crystal.
Have your crystal.
Okay, roll call. Oh no, questions, yes, and roll call, right? Yes, roll call.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Tom, will you move in curriculum, number 49 to 50?
So moved. Second.
Any questions? Okay, roll call.
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Justin, will you move policies, number 51 through 54?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Question? On policy number 6161.1, I just, after the second C in the guidelines, that's new wording. Can I ask where we got that wording from?
That wording comes from statute 18A 354.36.
Okay, so Governor Murphy says we can't change that. Bingo. Okie doke. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes, but I will abstain from number 54 for policy number 6161.1.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes, with an abstention of 6161.1.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Yes. Go back to Karen. Will you move in number 55 other?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Butler?
Yes.
Mrs. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Grosskopf?
Yes.
Dr. Mar?
Yes.
Mrs. Nyquist?
Yes.
Mrs. Case?
Yes. Any items for discussion, unfinished business? New business? Any comments from the public? At this point, the Board of Education welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. Please note that as per Board Policy Number 1120, a total of 15 minutes is allocated for public comments at any single board meeting. In order to provide residency opportunity to comment, individual speakers are limited to three minutes each at any particular board meeting. The board may extend these time limits at its discretion. Any question should be directed to the board president. And depending upon the nature and complexity of the question, it may or may not be answered during the meeting by the administration. If so, the response would occur after this public portion of the meeting has concluded. Everyone has the freedom to speak, but please be advised that anything said in public may have legal ramifications, and there is no protection regarding statements made by the public. Please state your name and address before you begin.
Yes, hi, this is Sumit Vaidhani. I live in the township. My question is more related to artificial intelligence. I mean, given the advent of artificial intelligence, what we are seeing, is there any plans or thought to, like, how it can be leveraged to optimize the budget or otherwise? What can we do with that?
I don't have any answer for you to that. I mean, I guess if you would like to reach out and send an email, that seems to be like a bigger question.
Yes.
So if you want to, if you are interested, I would send an email and ask that question.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Interview of candidates for Board of Education vacancy. So we said it before, Karen mentioned it, alphabetical order. I know our candidates are here. So we're going to call you up by alphabetical order, last name. Those candidates who are not being interviewed, we're going to ask that you sit out in the hallway while the candidate's being interviewed. We're going to ask every candidate the same questions. And then we are going to go into a closed session to discuss the candidacy and one other item. And then we'll come back and give our, provide our selection. Anything I'm missing?
No, that's it.
Okay, so the first person to go is Alex DeJanis.
Cam, I thought we were gonna, oh, they are.
They're going, yeah. Do we need to, is that door closed?
Yeah, go, Lauren.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Lauren.
Good evening, Superintendent. Good evening, Ms. Bomer. Congratulations on a great budget.
Okay, great. So we are going to start, we have a couple of questions. We are just going to kind of go down the line with the board members asking questions. If you guys don't have a copy, we can pass it down. Otherwise, it's in your email, so. So let's, we're going to just- Yeah, if you could, yeah. You're going to get started, yes.
Okay. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you were interested in being on the Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Nyquist. My name's Alexander DeJanis. I'm a almost 10-year resident of Long Hill Township. I'm a father of four children, almost all school age. My daughter Alyssa goes to Millington School as a fifth grader. My son Zach is a third grader at Millington, and I have rising twins who are emerging into the pre-K and kindergarten realm. I'm interested in serving on the board because I've dedicated a good amount of my life to the advocacy and advancement of education. I'm an attorney. I've practiced for almost 20 years. Most of my work has been in school law. I've represented school districts, including the Newark Board of Ed for seven years as an in-house attorney. I'm currently a partner at a firm in Bernadetteville, New Jersey, and continue to represent school boards such as Montclair, Mendham, Middlesex, Montgomery, and several others that I can't remember now, in various legal issues, most notably in what is HIV litigation, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. I've always had a passion for working for and helping govern schools. I've always had a passion for working for and helping govern schools. I've served on the high school board of my alma mater for fifteen years. I'm an advocate both for public and private education. I think there's great value to both. I started this crazy mission in college as a student government member, first serving as a representative in student government, but also eventually for the University Senate and also Board of Trustees at Rutgers. So this is something that I take great interest and pride in and happy to continue to serve on this board, which I served on for four years in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you. What do you think are a school board's members' primary responsibilities?
Well, this is pretty clearly trained upon, but I think if I were just to speak philosophically, the most important thing that we do is to act as stewards for one of the most important public resources that exists in our community, which are its schools. So our job as stewards of those is to understand what the, what the community goals are, to fulfill that by being informed, by being actively involved in the community, by, of course, supervising the leadership that you hire, such as the superintendent, by remaining cognizant of what the right roles are of, that are a member of a nine-member body, right? The division is important where we are not operating the school district. We oversee by, by asking the right questions, monitoring the work of the, the chief school administrator, and also setting policy.
Thank you. What key qualities and, excuse me, specific skills do you feel you have to bring to the role of Long Hill Township School District Board Member?
Thank you for asking, Dr. Mar. Again, I, I kind of fall back on my experience, but also my genuine interest in maintaining the schools as one of the most important, I think, features of this town. I, when I moved here, it came as somewhat of a surprise to me how incredibly under the radar this town flies. And it is a phenomenal town, and it is somehow sandwiched in between all these other more popular towns. But truthfully, the success of a, of a school district is really one of the most driving force, one of the most important driving forces for the success of the community and the town, and quite frankly, the property value of the town. So it is not only a moral imperative to keep schools as driven, successful, and, you know, focused on growth, but it's also a financial obligation. This is something that is tied to every community member's property value. It's a no-brainer for us to do our very best to maintain the most successful and the most, you know, well-run schools that we can. And also, I have four kids in the city. Almost.
Please describe your previous community or nonprofit experience.
So I've already mentioned some, so I'm not gonna repeat those, but what little free time I actually have, I dedicate to coaching baseball, softball, and to a certain limited extent soccer that my kids are involved in. I wish I had more time to volunteer my time, but that's kind of where I've been able to do it. Again, I served on this board for four years in the past, between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three. I've remained interested and continuing to serve, both by running in, in the elections, but also putting my name forward today. Are you aware of the time and training commitments, ethics, law disclosures, and fingerprinting background checks required for the school board membership? And are you ready to serve if selected this evening? I am fully aware of it. I passed the background check since twenty twelve. I have no doubt that I would continue to. And yes, school board members are the most highly trained public officials in the state of New Jersey. And yes, I've, I've in fact helped provide some of the training in the past.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may say, you have an embarrassment of riches. You have very good candidates. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Can you send in Mr. Ferrandino?
Of course.
Thank you.
Give him his number one.
He just asked, he asked a question.
Yeah, he's gonna do it. He has his own.
Oh. He prepared.
I had my own too.
We just felt like good to pass them down, I guess.
Where are we?
You said Mr. Ferrandino?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well, thanks, Joe.
Can you send Ms. Coleen?
Well, I took care of that one. Did we, did we misword it?
Yeah. I have K-O-L-E. Sorry, Alex. Is that not right? Oh, it's right. Okay.
We said it quite clearly.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hi. I'm Allison Cole. I'm, I've come to the right place, correct?
Yes.
All right, great.
Hello. So could you please introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in joining the Board of Education?
Sure. So good evening, esteemed members of Long Hill Township Board of Education. My name is Dr. Allison Cole. I live in Millington, and I am honored to be speaking with you today. As a former full-time pulmonary critical care and sleep medicine physician, I have dedicated my career to understanding the intricacies of health and wellness. However, my priorities shifted when I decided to make my family a priority. Sorry. I'm kind of short, so I'm just gonna hold it like this. Now, with two children in the Long Hill Township School District, I am deeply invested in ensuring that they receive the best possible education. My transition from full-time clinical practice allowed me to focus on a sleep telemedicine practice that I now have. I also started public education with the Sleep is My Waking Passion podcast, and I transitioned to a continuing medical education forum where I help healthcare professionals improve their education in sleep and pulmonary disease. The other thing that I've been up to is that I'm actually, I started volunteering with the American Academy of Sleep Medicine. That is the nationally recognized sleep medicine, you know, major society, medical society that I belong to. And at the ASM, one of the things I volunteered to do was to do governmental advocacy. Since starting, when I transitioned out of full-time clinical practice in October of twenty twenty-two, I've now been to Capitol Hill no less than three times, and I advocate for sleep health on a national level. So I wanted to share with you why I'm here today, which is that improving academic performance, I know that it is something that is clearly on the Board of Education's mind. And while it is incredibly complex, and what I'm about to say may be intensely not popular, I will say it anyway, one of the quickest ways to improve academic performance is to improve the sleep of our children. The statistics in New Jersey are actually kind of frightening. We are ranked tenth in the country for being the most sleep deprived. Fifty-seven percent of middle schoolers in New Jersey are sleep deprived, and seventy-three percent of our high schoolers are chronically sleep deprived. And, you know, there have been other places in the United States who have basically been able to demonstrate significant improvement in math and reading scores in students just by delaying school start times an hour. It requires a very complicated and coordinated effort, but there are other places in New Jersey who have instituted this. Chatham, Ringwood, excuse me, Ridgewood, I believe the Oranges, Maplewood. So there's a few other places where they've demonstrated that this is something that you can do. So I know this is a growing movement. I know I'm also probably running out of time. So I just wanted to say that I would be very happy to advocate for this and would love to work in coordination with y'all to basically foster a supportive and inclusive environment that improves the academic well-being, as well as the well-being of our students who are very athletic, because it improves athletic performance as well, not to mention mental and physical health for them. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a couple more questions.
Sure.
What do you think, excuse me, are the primary responsibilities of a school board member?
I, it sounds to me, based on this meeting, that you're looking at budget, you're looking at various aspects of the education, but I do think that, I wasn't sure if I'd ever have another platform to talk about sleep health, and I do think it's a, another responsibility of the board to think a little bit outside the box, aside, outside of the box, different from what you might usually expect the standard protocol is for the Board of Education.
Okay. Danielle?
Um, what, yeah, what key qualities and specific skills do you feel you have to bring to the role of Long Hill Township School District Board Member?
I think I'm highly organized. I am very capable of, just by way of what I've done with my career, interacting with people who come from different educational backgrounds. I have a, a real passion for, you know, essentially caring for the town in a way that I think brings a sort of new or different meaning to it. I have a broad breadth of experience, and I'm very passionate about advocacy, and, yeah, I think those are probably my, I'm also very collaborative individual, so.
Thank you. Please describe your previous community or nonprofit experience.
Sure. I don't, I'm not gonna lie, I don't have any nonprofit experience, per se, but what I have done pretty much with the American Academy of Sleep Medicine is that is in, you know, I just volunteer my time. And we meet, we have monthly meetings where we go over our agendas for what we're going to, what we're collaborating to do. Currently, I'm working with the SOAR Coalition, Coalition, which is an organization that is geared toward securing Medicare oxygen benefits for patients. So that is something with my pulmonary background that other people on the ASM did not feel comfortable participating in, so I'm advocating from there, from, so I'm on that Coalition. That just meets once a month. And then I, we collaborate with other organizations, so I have some friends on the American Medical Association, so we've done some Hill Day participation to try to improve physician Medicare reimbursement so that we can keep doctors employed, which is kind of a problem these days.
Thank you. Thank you. Are you aware of the time and training commitments, ethics, law disclosures, and fingerprinting background checks required for school board membership? And are you ready to serve if elected this evening?
Yes, to all of that. And I do have the capacity, which is one of, I mean, this would never have been possible if I stayed in my full-time clinical job. I didn't have time to spend time with my kids, let alone come here and sit in this very long meeting. So it is something that I do have the bandwidth for, so I figured, why not throw my hat in the ring?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you mind asking Christina if she can come in? I'm gonna go with the first name. I didn't do well with the last name.
This is all I have for her, is her letter. There's nothing in her letter, so, you know, I mean.
We have a couple of questions for you.
I had hoped so. I'm excited.
Okay.
Cool. Please introduce yourself and tell us why you're interested in joining the Board of Education.
Good evening. I'm Christina Malapione. I am a Sterling resident here in town. I am a mom of three young children, and my interest sparked here for the last couple of years as we've been introduced to the Board of Education from my child enrolling in school. I've kind of been trying to find a good place and fit for me. Currently, currently, I'm in my favorite role of my life, which is mom to three young children, and I'm fortunate that I'm able to do that. And I, I've volunteered on different committees, different boards, I've done some things with the PTO, I've done some things with the Education Foundation, I've been class mom three years in a row out of the four that my son has been at Gillette. And I would really like to further involve myself while I have the time and opportunity to do so. I think serving community is important. I think that there is a need for parents to be involved at the capacities that they can withstand. And right now, while my time in life allot for that, I'd really like to take the opportunity to serve community and, and children in general. I think our children and the upcoming generations hold forth a lot of good to do in this world, and I would like to help foster that in any way I can.
Christina, what do you think are a school board member's primary responsibilities?
Um, I think that you're, I think you have a lot of priorities and, and important roles that you all serve, but I think primarily looking at the board, obviously the budget and, and staffing and, and all the things that come to your table that need to be handled with a certain fragility, and understanding how important and complex even a simple decision might be. I think that there's lots of repercussions, whether they be positive or negative for the community, the schools, the teachers, the staff, and again, of course, the kids, priority. And I think that you guys have to really work well together. There has to be combination and communication. I think transparency and honesty are very important to your roles, aside from being efficient. Thank you.
What key qualities or specific skills do you feel that you can bring to the table beyond the Lord, Long Hill Township Board of Education? Excuse me, it's my allergies, I'm dying, as a board member.
Thank you, Mrs. Nyquist. And that's quite okay. I'm struggling too, so don't mind my sniffles. I think, so I have a background, I've always felt a high desire to serve and fill a need. I have a background in early childhood education. My bachelor's degree is in speech and hearing sciences. I have a minor in psychology, a focus in children's child psychology. I went on to earn a K-five post-bac. I am a, I am a licensed teacher. I fell in love with early childhood education. I was able to serve in this community for twelve years as an educator. Lots of my little babies that I've loved have come through this district. I still go to dance recitals and, and baseball games and all sorts of things for kids that aren't even mine, because I think that when you, when you teach and you implicate and you love a child, you love them all the time, and they touch you on such a personal level. But getting back to your question, I think that my background in education, my background in early childhood specifically, it just, I love the little ones, but, but fostering education in our children and having served in schools, public and private, helps me to understand the needs of those, you know, serving in our buildings. And I also, I just carry a lot of empathy. During the pandemic, I saw a need for, for support in motherhood. I was a new mom myself. I was pregnant with my second, and I became a birth jeweler. So my skills there in seeing women through a very emotional and empowering experience, I think, and finding support and partners, and just finding a way to be a present and assertive power with a lot of compassion is something I specialize in. So I feel that those skills could definitely help this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please describe your previous community or nonprofit experience.
So I have volunteered with the Long Hill Education Foundation, and I've done some of the event planning, I've done some things of that nature. I served on the board for the expansion of the preschool program here with the previous superintendent, and I was able to get into all the buildings and meet all the principals and do things of that nature. I volunteered on all sorts of, just, I do, I've, I've done some outsourcing with Moms Helping Moms, which is local to our community and things of that nature. I've done some pro bono jeweler work for women who were not able to afford the services. I'm, I was, not currently, but I was part of a outreach group in Newark who helps single moms through, through labor, and we volunteered our services so that they can have support if they weren't finding it in their own lives. I just think that that's very important, and I, I love any opportunity to help. moms through, through labor, and we volunteered our services so that they can have support if they weren't finding it in their own lives. I just think that, that's very important, and I, I love any opportunity to help serve community. I love the food drives and things of that nature. I really like being class mom, but I had to give somebody else a turn this year. My poor son, he was like, please, I was like, baby, mommy did it three years in a row, so it's, it's another mommy's turn we have to share. But I just, I, being a teacher and an educator, being class mom allows me that opportunity to kind of come back in and do things of that nature, and, and pull out all my old teaching tricks that I have to blow the dust off of and bring back out from time to time. My kids will tell you, I use my teacher voice sometimes at home. So, it's been, it's been wonderful. I miss, I miss the schools, so this, like I said, to Mr. Grosskopf's question, I just, while I have the time and opportunity to use these skills, I'd like to implement them in a place where I feel that they'll serve. Thank you.
All right. Are you aware of the time and training commitments, ethics law disclosures, and fingerprinting background checks required for school board membership, and are you ready to serve if selected this evening?
Yes. I am familiar with them. I've been fingerprinted teaching myself and been through the systems, and I still keep up my CEUs, both through like teaching strategies and things like that. I stay up to date on the curriculums, even though I'm not using them currently, and again, with birthing practices and things like that, I stay up to date in my trainings, even though I'm not actively using them or pursuing them at this moment. I think that, and, and the board, obviously. I look forward to training and learning and expanding my knowledge in those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So, those, that's all the questions we have for you, so thank you. Would you mind sending Josh in?
Absolutely. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Good evening. So, we have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Could you please introduce yourself and tell us why you are interested in joining the Board of Education?
Okay. Yeah, so my name is Josh Naral. As you know, I'm interested in joining the board because I have one child who's been in the system for several years and another who's going to be entering in the fall. I've dedicated my career to public interest, and I want to give back to my community by kind of using the skills that I've developed during my career to assist with, you know, my child's education.
What do you think are a school board member's primary responsibilities?
Being good shepherds for the community's resources and the, the education of students to create, you know, obviously wise citizens and leaders for the future.
What key qualities and specific skills do you feel you have to bring to the role of Long Hill Township School District Board Member?
So, so I'm trained as an attorney. I work at the Financial Industry Regulatory Authority, which is a nonprofit public interest entity. We regulate financial services, try to keep the bad actors out, try to get reimbursement for customers that have been, you know, victims of fraud. So, in, in working there, I've spent a lot of time working with, you know, complex contractual agreements, financing documents, funding promissory notes, things like that, as well as corporate governance issues. So, I've developed, you know, a keen eye for detail, you know, financial literacy, literacy with the law and the legislative process, how the law is made, how rules and regulations are created, and I think that these are skills that I could bring, hopefully, to the position on the board.
Please, excuse me, please describe your previous community or nonprofit experience?
My nonprofit experience, I think I explained it a little bit already. Worked at Fenner. I've been there over 10 years, so it's something that I'm, you know, interested in long-term, you know, public service, that sort of thing. In terms of community, I regularly, regularly bring my children to the Halloween events that we have, you know, down at the field down there, the egg hunt. The Sterling Street Fair is on the street that I live on, so we go down there as well.
Are you aware of time and training commitments, the ethics, law disclosures, and fingerprinting background checks required for school board membership, and are you ready to serve if selected this evening?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Can you ask Sumit to come in?
Okay. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. We have a couple of questions for you.
Hi, good evening. Could you introduce yourself and tell us why you are interested in joining the Board of Education?
Sure. My name is Sumit Vithani, and I have a bachelor's and master's in computer science and an MBA in finance. I just completed AI certification from Wharton. There are a couple of reasons that I'm interested. First and foremost, like when I moved into the township, for example, our middle school was rated 10 out of 10 in some of the websites like Nish.com and others, and now it is rated around six, seven, like, depends on which website, and one of the things that would be good to see is like it goes back to that level where it was. So, like, for example, my son, he has already, he's in second grade, but he's already completed third grade NJSLA books, and what I would like to see is the kids who are sharp get more challenge and be able to kind of see how they can grow and how the school district like achieves excellence overall, right? So, that's one of my main reasons. And then the second thing, as I heard, the budget and stuff like that, and given my background in technology and experience, I'm learning, I've already gotten certification on AI, and then I'm doing other certifications in AI as well. So, I think I can add value there as well, like on the budget level or understanding where we can optimize the things going forward, like, you know, there's, if we have it, if we can optimize it, then over a period of time, we can invest in other areas for the school district where it can add a lot more value to the kids over time, so.
You didn't realize it was me. What do you think are a school board member's primary responsibilities?
Primary responsibilities, I guess from what I've heard so far, it's about budget maintenance of the grounds, stuff like that, and some things about governance of what is happening, what is working, what is not working, and things like that, so hopefully.
I know you've touched on some of these, but what key qualities and specific skills do you feel that you have to bring to the role of Long Hill School District Board Member?
So, I have both experience in computer science, and also I have a MBA in finance, and I work in finance, so I understand how money works and how we can add value, like, you know, I was asking earlier the question about the debt that we have and how we can optimize the payment on that, and then about technology where we can improve, and maybe we can add AI education to the kids even at this level, and, you know, I mean, that's where the majority of the changes, robotics plus AI can really, really impact the world in the next coming 20 years. I mean, what we've seen in the last 20 years, that's just a trailer, right?
Please describe your previous community or nonprofit experience.
So, I haven't worked in any board of education so far, but I did try to start something called Divine Fellowship during COVID to help people. My dad is a homeopath, which is homeopathic medicine in India, and I did buy some to give for free to people who could benefit during COVID, so that.
Are you aware of the time and training commitments, ethics, law disclosures, and fingerprinting background checks required for school board membership, and are you ready to serve if selected this evening?
Sure. Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Everybody, if you guys want, can come sit back in here. Okay. And will you move us into closed session?
Sure. The board shall move to closed session to discuss the qualifications of candidates for the Board of Education vacancy and to discuss a harassment, intimidation, and bullying report. Action will be taken upon return from the closed session.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.